And welcome those of you who are with us today. We'll call Councilmember Ahern to lead us in our invocation and the pledge to the flag.
Hi, councilmembers. Do you have a Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our city, Lord. We thank you for this blessing, Lord. Lord, we ask that you bless our city. I ask you to give us wisdom as we deliver here this evening, Lord. We love you and we thank you for your grace, Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, we'll do my ask, optional again, as we did in past time. Let's all check in. And we have set the present. We have the minutes of the April 6 meeting. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion. They be approved as written. We have a motion. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes are approved. We open the floor for the first time for comments from citizens about agenda items. You can talk about any item that's on the agenda, with the exception of the public hearing, and which will be open for discussion as well. And the items that are not on the agenda that you wish to call the attention of the council will be addressed at a later point in the agenda. The floor is now open. See, no one come forward. We'll close this portion of the agenda and go to the public hearings. We have one today, that being ordinance 3685, the Nortonson City Council of Morristown. It amends Title 10 of the municipal code under animal control.
Council will recall that we made a recent change in the way we deal with animal control. Previously, we contracted with Humane Society. Currently, we contract with Hamlin County. That's the real root of the change of the ordinance that's before you is to reflect the change in who's providing the animal control services. We recommend approval.
The floor is now open in the public hearing portion for anybody who wishes to address this item. See, no one come forward. We will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion that this ordinance be adopted. Motion Smith. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or comments by the council? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion is approved. We go down to, we have a resolution today, this being Resolution 23-21. This being a resolution of the City Council of the City of Morristown, approving the fund balance spending prioritization policy. This as recommended and discussed by our finance committee in work session of our last meeting.
This resolution, as you indicated, does come from the finance committee. They discussed the ways to manage and handle the council contingency amount. This provides for a reserving of unspent council contingency up to a cap of $125,000. It did come as a recommendation from finance.
Is there a motion to accept this resolution? Motion, Pentagon. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Any questions or comments? We're ready to vote. Let's vote. And that motion has been approved as well. We have a second resolution, this being 24-21. This being a resolution of the City Council of the City of Morristown, supporting the Drug Dealer Liability Act lawsuit.
We have been involved in this court action for some time. However, a recent ruling in the court found that the district attorney could not file on behalf of the cities in the suit. Based on that, we're asking you to adopt this resolution and continue to participate in that action. This does come as a recommendation from the city attorney who is here to answer any questions you may have.
We have a motion to accept this recommendation. Motion center. And we have a second. Are any questions or comments on this one? I do have a question. This is the opioid suit, correct? And I'm assuming when if counties, it applies to counties, but the city being a part of the county, there's a city share that's, is that right?
Correct. Yes. And this is, as Tony said, this is one we've been involved in. We're basically just substituting out ourselves, the counties and the cities, in place of Mr. Armstrong. And the firm is the same firm that was representing the district attorneys and now is going to be continuing its representation of the individual cities and counties.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. We have two ordinances to introduce today on first reading. First is ordinance 3686. This is the ordinance of the City of Morristown. It amends Title 9 of the Morristown Municipal Code pertaining to the farmer's market.
Council's had a workshop on this ordinance previously. It's basically a number of minor updates regarding how we manage the farmer's market. The biggest change relates to the changing status of crossroads downtown. With the assumption of some of those responsibilities by the chamber, the ordinance was need to be changed to reflect those changes in operations. We have had workshops. We have worked with the chamber to develop these regulations. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to this recommendation? Motion, Ahern? We have a second. And we have a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
Is there a fee scheduled for reserving?
I believe, my recollection is that the chamber would adopt a fee schedule similar to what crossroads did, but it would be up to them to adopt the fees and to collect the fees for those services.
It does mention that, but it didn't have a rate, so they haven't, it will be pretty much in line with what it is already.
Yes. And I believe those are set. I think it's contained, the specific fees are contained within the actual application when you go to the chamber. And they have all those, the fees laid out in their application process.
And I've had a couple of inquiries, so I've told, just, I've already referred this to the chamber, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, the previous regulations on that, that they did not allow, I believe it was political organizations or churches to have, to use the farmer's market.
It was political or religious activities.
Activities.
Yes, correct. So you couldn't, couldn't have a revival, and you couldn't have a political rally. And I don't believe that has changed, Lord.
I think it should change. Wish they'd look, chamber would look into that. I think one of the problems we have when we give that authority away like that is when people need to use it for something. It comes back on this, but that's all I have to say about it.
Any other comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. And it's set for a public hearing on May 4. Next is ordinance 3651.04. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance 3651 of the City of Morristown, Tennessee Annual Budget Fiscal Year 2021, to appropriate additional funds totaling $274,000 for the design contract with Madder and Craig for the improvements at East Morris Boulevard and Thompson Creek Road.
As you indicated, this is a change in the existing budget. We're operating under the day. It provides funds set aside in the fund balance for this project. The contract in question will be considered later in the agenda.
Is that later in the agenda, item four under nine?
Yes, that's correct.
If this is for engineering only, $274,000?
Right. This is engineering and bid services, yes.
Okay, now, when this design is completed, we get to look at it before it's awarded, is that correct?
That's correct. You'll continue to work with the engineers that goes to the design. You've had a concept plan previously. This will move us into the formal design phase.
Any other questions on this one?
Yes, I would, I would just like to say that last night we talked with Madder and Craig when they presented this in our session at Public Works. I believe, I know I made the comment and believe the understanding was that this road design would not infringe or include any of the parkland. And that, I know we took out the entrance road into Franklorino Park, but that this one, and I wanted to go on record that I may not be able to vote for that if it takes any of the parkland.
I believe we can safely state that the, the design as it's currently laid out in concept does not encroach on any recreational facilities. It does use city land, and you're, I don't know that we have a formal line of where the parkland might be considered, but in order to tie the, the road end to Miller's Landing, there's a defined point we have to meet, and that gets very close to the parkland. I'm not sure that, that we would be using the city property, but not something currently used for recreation purposes.
As long as, excuse me.
Go ahead.
As long as Madder and Craig understand, and they do understand exactly what our feelings are. So if they go present something that they know that we don't want, then we, they need to know upfront. We will, and everybody else, we will turn it down.
That doesn't affect this part. We're talking about the contract part. Okay. Let's get this voted on, then we can, we can. Some of the comments may be more appropriate for item four in the, in the contract. Any other thoughts on this one? Anybody with comments? Okay. We need a motion. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation to move the funds?
Yes.
Motion, Pentagon. Need a second. And we've got a second. Any other questions or comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. It's set for public hearing on May the 4th as well. Under the awarding of bids and contracts, we have an approval of a license agreement with Jolly Foundation. This is for the creation of the all-inclusive park to be located, or playground, I guess, at the West Morris Boulevard, South Jackson Corner.
The agreement before you lays the legal framework that allows us to have the public private partnership you refer to with the Jolly Foundation. You have had a previous workshop about the concept of what we're being proposed here. This gets you to, to a point where we can work together. It lays out the responsibilities of each party, and if it has been reviewed by legal, we recommend approval.
It's your motion to this recommendation. Motion, Senator. And we need a second. Have a second. Any questions or comments here? Hearing done, let's vote. We've got a punch again.
I think that's what you would call a turnkey project.
Yes, we, we expect them to do everything and donate the land, and both the land is ours, but additional portion of land and the project to the city for our ongoing operation.
Next, we have the approval of the financial advisory agreement between the City of Morristown and Cumberland Securities.
This came up before the finance committee as well. Morristown Utilities has requested that we consider refinancing the 2012 bond issue. That bond issue covered sewer and stormwater projects, so it is now a shared responsibility from the city and Morristown Utilities. The bond, of course, is underwritten by full faith and credit of the city. In order to move forward with refinancing or considering to refinance those bonds, we need to prepare certain documents. In order to do that, we need a financial advisor. That is the reason the agreement is on the agenda for your consideration now. It has been reviewed by the finance committee. It comes as a recommendation from them.
Is the motion, do we have a motion to accept that recommendation from the finance committee? Motion, Pentagon. Do we have a second? We do have a second. Any questions or comments?
And this would be the financial advisor for this, this situation, this financial situation only?
The agreement lays out a 90-day period to get these bonds done with a additional 30 days. After that, you can terminate the agreement with 15 days notice.
Any other comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval to declare properties, five properties that were purchased at the September 29, 2020 tax sale as surplus.
This relates to a set of properties that came under the control of the city through a tax sale. The redemption period is run for these properties. I believe this is 120-day set of properties. We're seeking that you declare them surplus. You will recall, we recently went through this process with a set of properties that had 90-day redemption period. This will allow us to move forward with a sale and redemption. We, matter of fact, we closed on 15 parcels yesterday, putting those back in the hands of private landowners. That will allow them to get back on the tax rolls, and hopefully with owners that will maintain the properties. This is part of the process we've laid out. It's simply that these next five are ready to go. In terms of the redemption period, we recommend approval.
There's a motion to this recommendation. Motion, Smith. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of the design contract with Madder and Craig for the design of improvements at the East Morris Boulevard at Thompson Creek Road.
Council discussed this briefly earlier in the meeting, but just to recap, you have looked at this in a number of work sessions. This contract allows the engineer to move forward into the design phase. We've been at concept phase. The scope provides for improvement of the geometry of the road, as well as a signal at Thompson Creek in East Morris. Does not include any improvements or entrance into the existing park. The contract provides for $265,000 for design and $9,000 for bidding processes. We need to get moving on this project. The residential development on Thompson Creek is moving along at a fairly rapid pace. In order to accommodate the traffic, we need to get moving. Based on that, we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to this recommendation? Motion, Ahern? Is there a second? And we, we need a second. And we have a second. Comments?
I would simply like to point out that, yes, we have discussed this many times in many situations, including work sessions and everything else, but we only saw the design last Friday. So it's not something that we've looked at for a long time to say, yes, that's what we would like to see. So if, if there's any, and I understand that we have to make the turn down there, I would certainly like to have seen us to have an agreement that we would take that property all the way through Walmart Shopping Center. I understand that there's a lot going on there. It may need to wait, but at the same time, we do not need to infringe on Franklorino Park.
And as I understand it, this doesn't infringe on the park, I mean, any of the programs there?
That's two different statements we're making. I'm saying that it doesn't infringe on the park. And you and Tony are making the statement that it doesn't infringe on the activities of the park. That's, that's two different things we're talking about. So the question is, how much does it infringe on the park?
Okay, well, how many feet?
Well, that, again, you've seen concept drawings. You've not seen design drawings because they don't exist. Those are the questions will be answered when they get down to design. They will come back to you. They'll be able to answer that question, but that's beyond the scope of what we have before us today.
I understand, but I, I want to reiterate. Those things come to us on Friday before the meeting on Tuesday. So if we want to have a work session when this is done, and they're ready to go to that phase, then let's have that discussion.
You've seen the concept a number of times. It's been modified based on your input. That's the intent of the concept before you today is to reflect the comments from your last work session, but we will certainly make the engineers available to council as they're going through the design phase, so you can reiterate your concerns.
That's all we're asking.
Okay.
And the council does have final approval on the property.
Yeah, absolutely. You own the property. You're, you're under contract for a design concept. You don't need to fund construction of anything if you don't desire to do so.
So you say we're, we're not getting the cart before the horse. We're going to have the input on what they come with, right?
That's correct.
I would want that also.
Well, I think we need to also let them know our concerns going in on this deal. And the infringement on the land or whatever activities are at the park. If they know that going in, then they maybe need to be setting up a work session with us to get our input on different things that we want to see done or not.
We'll be happy to get Madder and Craig back before you. They've been before you a number of times. We are using some of that land now for a borrow pit, for example, but we can certainly examine that in more detail as, as you desire.
I agree with Mr. Vivins because every time they come to us and then go back and change it, it's more dollars. And so before they come to us with a design, it's going to cost even more to change when it comes into the design part. And if they, if they know upfront that this is not something that council's going to approve, or a number of people in council are not going to approve, then there's no point in going down that road and paying that money. The other thing we're talking about, city land. Yes, the, the park is on city land, and there is a right of way, but there is also, it has to be a boundary line for the park. And I think that's what I'm talking about, that it doesn't go over the boundary line where the park is.
And I guess that's my concern, is I don't know where that boundary line is defined.
How do we, I think it would be important if we would define the boundary line.
That, I think that would be helpful in this conversation. I don't know that's been done in the past.
That, and also the fact that we need to really be acknowledging, it's been mentioned for several months, that there is a requirement to convert, even if it's not replacing, like if you, replacing a tennis court, if you take a tennis court out, it's any, any, any foot of land that is taken away from the use of the park has to be converted because of the grant monies that were used in that park.
From the use of the park, I believe is correct, but, but I'm, again, that is beyond my expertise and the detail I've not gotten into. You may be more familiar with the federal regulations than I am, but at this point in time, I don't think we're invoking anything that would require conversion.
We need to, we need that in writing. We need, we need to be sure instead of just going on what we, what we might think.
Tony, I think what we're hearing, I think what Tommy was talking about, Craig, wrong Tommy, there've been some questions about traffic flow problems up there, and we need to look at the plans and make sure we know what those are. Have you heard any of that today?
The, the red light of Akita, I've heard a lot of people do not want that one taken out.
Well, that's some others we just need to understand before we vote on. That's from the traffic study.
Pardon?
Is that from the traffic committee?
The, the.
That's from DOT.
Yeah, that'd be a T-Dot concern that we have to deal with on that, that portion. There's another project, there's a sister project to this one that deals with the East Morris Boulevard, and that traffic line will be a part of that study in that project.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of the security card reader system for the Morristown Regional Airport with Fleener Security in the amount of $29,930.
Council may recall, we've been talking about this one for a long time. This project provides enhanced security at the airfield. It upgrades from a keypad system to a card reader system. It does include security cameras and other security functions that improve our ability to meet federal guidelines for controlling our airport. The funding comes from the state. It does have a 5% match, which we have already paid in getting to this point. Airport Commission's been working this project for more than a year. They have reviewed these plans and these bids. They're very comfortable with the vendor. They, they recommend approval of the contract that's before you, so it comes to you as a recommendation from the Airport Commission.
Is there a motion to accept that recommendation? Motion, Ahern? We have a second. Any questions on this one? Hearing done, let's vote. And that motion carries. Coming down, the city administrator's report. Tony?
One of the big things on my plate these days, I'm sure you're all aware, is budget preparation. It's moving, but moving slowly. We do have penciled in the date of Friday, May 14th, for presentation of the proposed budget. I anticipate that would be a nine o'clock meeting. That is our traditional time for those meetings, but please do reserve that Friday, the 14th, for that purpose. Based on our, our last work session, I want to, once again, thank Commissioner Perky for his work in preparing the study on our communication system options. We were very encouraged about some of the things he pointed out about timing, the ability to have partners, the possibility of funding. We'll continue to report progress on that as we move forward. Hopefully, we'll be able to get you some very positive next steps in the coming weeks, but it will take a number of weeks before we're able to give you much more detail about where that is headed. Also, I know that everyone is tired of COVID. We've all got fatigue trying to deal with the, what we dealt with through the past year, but it's very clear we're not yet out of the woods. Local cases are trending back up. We, as of yesterday, and I didn't check today's numbers before the meeting began, we were at 99. We're back to the 100 cases threshold. We've had this month, eight new cases admitted to the hospital. Vaccines are available. We need to get people vaccinated. As of last night, 26% of our population of Hamlin County had received both, took both doses of the vaccine. Another 18% had received the first shot. That means that more than half of our population is not yet vaccinated. Appointments are available. Vaccines are available. We need to get people to get the vaccine to move forward to normal. We're trying to move toward normal operation. Parks and Rec is trying to get spring sports started, but if we don't pay attention, if we don't follow the guidelines, we're going to be back to the situation that we dealt with in the course of the winter, and this thing will linger on for many more months. I would urge people that have not taken advantage of the health department, the other ways to get a vaccine, to do so before we end up in a worse situation. I did want to remind people that we do have an election underway for three council seats. Early voting has already begun. The election day is, happens to coincide with our next council meeting on May the 4th. We encourage everyone to get out and vote. And then finally, we did have a workshop scheduled following this meeting, but Mr. Nielsen had a, a minor family emergency and had to, had to leave. Minor family emergencies, when it's your family instead of my family, so Steve is dealing with some issues. On my own front, we recently did the discussion of the community appearance report for, for a later date. And that's my report for today.
Thank you, Tony. We open the floor now for communications from anybody in the public that wishes to address the council about any item that you believe needs to come to our attention. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself by name and address. The floor is now open.
Quinn Holden, 8150 West Port Drive. I don't have property in the city, but you all do affect us in the county, because you all are joint with Hamlin County. A lot of things are joint. So what I want to say is, I would like to see you all videotape your meetings, so that your constituents can see what a good job you're doing. And I know that they would love to see it, because that way they can learn on what you all are doing and how their money is being spent. Them being taxpayers, I'm sure, they would love to know how that is going. So I would appreciate if you would video your meetings.
Thank you, Quinn. Who's next? Anyone else? Yes. Rob, I want to mention one thing. Public comments by campaigns, candidates for office, I think we do have a restriction on that, so your comments would need to be to non-campaign items.
Absolutely. I would never do that here.
Okay, I'm just letting you know.
Inappropriate. Rob Burke, 721, O Circle. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. I want to read a letter from a fellow constituent that is unable to attend today. Ms. Judy Greggert, lives at 578 Housley Street. I, and I'm going to read directly. "I have been here many times in the past as an advocate for the disabled and elderly. I represented Morristown in the Miss Wheelchair Tennessee Contest two years in a row and brought home two prizes each time. I have been unable to attend any meetings this past year and have had very little communication about your meetings. As I have said in the past, videotaping is a necessity for people like me who can't get out to the meetings, or for people who work and can't make it to the meetings due to them being held before a lot of people are off of work. A good quality camera connected to microphones for each council member and at the podium would be an inexpensive way to allow council members to provide information and access to your meetings for members of the public who, for whatever reason, cannot get to your meetings in person. In the past, I have been involved in many community projects and even a catalyst for some. I would like better communication..." I would like better communication between the elected city council and the general public, as would many others who are voiceless at this time. This could only show how well you work together for those who don't know. Thank you for considering this, and she's provided packets for each of you if you'd be interested in having. Also, I would agree that today I have seen, I've been here several times, as many, most probably all have known, and I have seen this council work together better today, maybe because it's election season, I don't know, but the council has worked better, better today than I have seen in quite some time or ever, and I think the public needs to see this. When I am out and talking to people, they don't feel like it is an issue for us to be able to take this. I agree, because most often, I believe, I've only sat in this room one time because of restrictions of, of how close we can sit together, so I've been able to sit in the other room. And if the current council believes that the current system is adequate enough for the people that must sit in the other room, the, the taping that we currently have, then I would say that that taping and the, with our current condition is good enough, better than nothing at all, for us to be able to review that and to watch that. Does it matter? But today is my birthday, I'd rather be at home with my family, but I am here because I don't have any other option to be here, because if not, I won't get to see it. I know minutes are put out, but they're not as always complete as I would, uh, like to see them, so that's why I'm here today, and I've requested you guys tape your meetings. Thank you, if anyone's interested in me, I'll, I'll.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak to the council?
My name is Linda Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road, I am a city property honor and voter. I come here today to bring a statement from Bree McCauley. She lives at 505 Lincoln Avenue. She's handicapped, very handicapped, as you'll understand through her statement, and she would love to have videotaping and posting of her meetings. This is her statement that she has made. My name is Bree McCauley and I am handicapped. The past year, my health has taken a turn for the worse and attending meetings has been impossible. I use a walker unless going more than 50 feet, then I need a wheelchair. But I've now been injured in my only good leg and have one arm in a hard brace and sling, making use of either of those devices near impossible without someone pushing me. My husband works late and friends have homes and jobs to tend to. I wish meetings could be taped so I could know what is going on with the government that we've opened for. I am not sure why this has not been allowed before. It's truly unfair to people like me or the elderly who cannot physically attend to miss out on the council's meetings for two reasons. First is because we are physically limited, which there is nothing that can be done about that. But second is because it isn't taped for us to see and at least feel that we are part of the community, and that is something that, something can be done about that if you all would change your minds and let us. That is her statement. My statement is I fully agree, I have seen her situation, I have talked to her, and just like Ms. Gregert, whom you have seen in, in the wheelchair come up here, and so many people that you don't see, you don't know, you don't even think about their situations, because if you did, you would do something. You would tape your meetings and post them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing done, the floor is now closed and open for comments from any council members about any particular item.
Might be an interest to the chief that I just heard the verdict on the guy in Minneapolis, he was guilty on all three counts, whatever all three counts were.
I've got, uh, four points I'd like to bring up, just, uh, for matter of thought and consideration. One is I've had a lot of people talk to me about vicious dogs and whether or not a vicious dog was a situation for animal control or police department. Uh, I just want to throw that out, you were part of that discussion, I believe. So we need to look into that, see what, what we can tell these people.
We've just recently begun with an animal control officer, I would assume it falls under the, the guidelines of the animal control officer, would that be right?
If it's a dog who is an immediate threat to someone, we respond to that, but then what we do is we work with the animal control officer and try to take care of that situation. So if it's a dog somewhere, we're going to report, let me say, my neighbor has a vicious dog, this, you know, this time it's peeing, but it's out of whatever, then that would be the animal control, but we can assist with that if needed.
Okay, thank you. Number two, uh, I would like for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce to consider political and religious activities to be at the farmer's market and pay the fee that has to be paid, let them make application, and if it fits the application, uh, I don't see any problem of being, of allowing that to happen to be, more, make more use of the farmer's market. The other point I want to make out is, uh, in response to, uh, Mr. Burke's comment, uh, I thought the council always worked well together, always has, since I've been here since 2015, I think, I, I think we work well together. And the other thing is, is I thought the, uh, meetings were already being taped and, uh, put out to the public use.
Like so, I've seen some of them on, on YouTube, but any other comments for, thank you, Tony.
Mayor, I'd like to remind everybody that Paul is hosting us at seven o'clock on Friday, really with KV to honor the Public Works and Sanitation workers there, so everybody's invited, seven o'clock this Friday at Public Works. Also, exciting, one of the first big events is gonna be at Fulton Hill Park is East High Prom. Craig's been working with them, and I believe Officer Hinkle has also been working with them, and, uh, Craig, are they making good headway?
Yes, ma'am, they are, and, uh, we constantly have a pretty good plan in the back end of, and, uh, from the Parks stretch, just taking this park guideline and so forth, it worked out really well, and, uh, I think we've pretty well got it planned out for a, a good evening, and if it does rain, they'll go back to the school empty.
I think that's an, an, an exciting inaugural event for Fulton Hill Park.
It is.
Fantastic, thank you. And the other thing is that I've given you an invitation as your guest, this is to, by the Somasala Circle, which is a federated women's club, and DAR is hosting an event at two o'clock on Wednesday, May the 5th, and that is to recognize the fact that the Women's Clubhouse, which is on Second North, is, really, First North, rather, is the home of Laura Price, who was one of the first suffragettes in this area, and she is the one that founded the movement in this area. And DAR is working toward getting historical marker that will be put, placed on that side, I've talked to Steve Nielsen about that, to designate that home on that side as the residence and home, uh, you know, the home of Laura Price, right here from Morristown.
Which address is this?
This is the Women's Clubhouse on the corner.
Oh, Women's Clubhouse.
Yes, 505 East First North Street.
I'm just the first one of that.
That was purchased by the, uh, the Somasala Circle and, uh, Ladies Reading Circle in 1825, so we've had that, so it's really, uh, it's been an exciting discovery. You know Carol Long, who works with Food on Foot? Carol Long is the regent for DAR, and she's the one that did the history on this and the investigation, so it's open to you, two o'clock, and you'll be in an exciting time.
Do you remember when the house was built?
I was there, but I can't remember exactly what the date was.
I thought you said 1845.
25. I was there. I swear to God, I did. As, as former sheriff, um, Charles Long said, and we were talking about the Marsland Cemetery and so forth, and he was on that committee in 1980, I asked him a question, he said, "Kaye, I'm not older than dirt." And that's really.
Anyone else? Craig, a rumor floating that Kay is the lead singer for the band at the Dance at the Prom, any truth to that?
There's news to make.
Good answer.
Is that a Kay issue? I can Kay.
Yeah, I can Kay.
As long as you bring your guitar. What is it, Bill, uh, Tommy Lee?
Yes.
Well.
You sing, Tommy, and I'll play.
So as the material here is taking a downturn, anything else to, uh, to come before the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion and we are adjourned.
So moved.